This special meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Smith.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Paulwood.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/simply. Our first agenda item tonight is the Achievement and Integration Report, and I believe we have a presentation. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you Chair Nathan. See my colleague Will Ruffin II, who's our Executive Director of Equity and Engagement, coming up. Let me give a little context before Will gives Board and the community an update on this report. The state of Minnesota has a number of different frameworks that it requires school districts to both develop and then regularly report on. And up until last year, two of those were combined into one. They were, at the time, called World's Best Workforce and, what we're going to hear about tonight, the Achievement and Integration Aid Report. And for about five years, those were combined into a single report and a single public meeting. At the legislature, in the last session, the legislature decoupled them. And candidly, the Department of Education has been figuring out how to adapt to that very recent change. For what we used to be called World's Best Workforce, which Board members know we turned to at your last meeting, a public meeting was required, or a separate public hearing outside the context of a school board meeting. And that used to include achievement and integration. When we scheduled the board meetings for this year, we did not know what the state would be requiring for the Achievement and Integration Report. We've subsequently learned a public hearing separate from the board meeting is not required. But, you know, we're rule followers, and so we scheduled this as a separate public hearing. In future years, this can be an agenda item in the regular meeting. So with all of that as background for why we're here, a public meeting is still required for World's Best Workforce now called Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report. So, with all of that, this is a funding stream that, as the name suggests, supports our work on raising student achievement and promoting integration. So there's a series of goals that Will will be reporting on and that we will be sharing. Two things I want to briefly share about goals, and this will be a subject of our conversation, I'm sure, deeply as we move into a new school improvement process and a new strategic plan. As you know, in our current strategic plan, we set all of our goals seeking statistically significant improvement in every indicator, every time. That has proved to be extremely ambitious. And that means you can get better, and if you don't get better at the rate of statistical significance, you don't meet your goal. And so it's something, I'm still proud of us for having aimed at that, but it's an important thing we're going to have to think about going forward. The second is, improving the system is built upon improving the schools and the grades and the classrooms. And so what we're looking at tonight are system-wide goals across almost seventeen thousand five hundred kids. And that's important to keep in mind as we're thinking about the pace of change. So with all of that as background, I want to thank Will for his leadership of the work we're doing in our Achievement and Integration Plan, or A&amp;I Plan as we call it for short. And here is our required annual report.
Thank you, School Board, for having me here again, and thank you, Dr. Pecel, for that introduction. Before I begin, I would just like to say you have an updated A&amp;I report in the board packet. There were some things that are missing and are now there. Thank you, Chair Nathan, for pointing that out. So you have observations and narratives are now for all three goals in the report, and that's now updated. So for tonight, we are... I'm here to report on the goals and the outcomes. Not everything in between as far as strategies and everything like that, but it's just the goals and the outcomes. We had three goals for an A&amp;I Plan. The first goal was centered around literacy, so improving the number or percentage of students who are on track for Fastbridge, as far as our Black and African American, our Hispanic students, and our students who are in our free and reduced population. Goal number two is around increasing the percentage of our teachers of color throughout the district. And goal number three is about post-secondary education and increasing the number of students who are receiving some post-secondary credit, at least one of those credits. So goal number one, as you can see here, Black and African American moved up from twenty-one point three percent to twenty-four point four percent, which is a three-point-one increase. So that does put us on track for our target. Our target was three percent increase over each year, so this was year one of a three-year plan. So three percent each year is what we're looking for. So Black and African American group did meet that goal. Hispanic moving up to nineteen point three percent, that was a three-point-nine percent increase. They also met, or I should say are on track to meeting our goal. And then our last free and reduced population also are on track with three percent increase. As far as our teachers of color, we moved from five percent to five point six percent, and our goal was six percent. So as you can see there, we did not meet that goal. We're not on track to meet that goal. But something I do want to point out, this year we have eighty-five teachers who are identifying as teachers of color. Last year we had eighty-four. So as far as retention, we're actually doing a really good job with keeping the people that we do have. We just have to get better at adding more people to our system. Goal number three, I do want to point out, the target here was four point five percent. This is going to what Dr. Pecel was talking about in his introduction, where you can still see an increase, but we didn't hit the goal. So for our American Indian Alaska Native students, you will see we went from four students down to zero students last year who were, who received any of those post-secondary credits. Our Asian Pacific Islanders, we actually moved up from forty-nine students to seventy-one students, which is good for a two-point-one percent increase, or twenty-two more students who received that credit. But they didn't hit the four-point-five percent mark, so we are not on track for that one either. Black and African American, we increased by thirty more students who have received that credit. Again, a two-point-seven increase, but still did not hit that four-point-five percent mark. The trend is a little different for our Hispanic population. We did have a decrease of one student, so one less student received that credit. Our white students actually moved up, so increased by thirty-eight students, but their percentage decreased three-point-four percent. And that happens as you have more number of students receiving that, their percentage is going to get smaller. For our free and reduced population, we did have an increase of thirty students in that subgroup. Again, it's two-point-seven increase, but we still did not hit that four-point-five percent mark there. The last goal, just kind of summarizing goal number three, total for all of the subgroups that I just mentioned, that was an increase of eighty-five students total. Some of them were in double categories, so you could be Black and in free or reduced, so that's why it's not one hundred and nineteen like it should be, it's at eighty-five. But we still had eighty-five more students receiving that credit than we did the year before, which is good. But we didn't hit that four-point-five percent increase, so we're not on track for that goal. So now I'm moving over into some of the integration, the integration part of the presentation. And you could just see here, these are the number of students who are outside of our district who are participating in events inside of RPS. RPS is no longer have a racially identified school, so we still have to partner with our surrounding schools to make sure that they're having exposure to a diverse population. And you can see there from our various programs across the district, the number of students who are coming from outside into our district. And this one here was a career fair where we brought all the schools together, so eighth grade was included with our ninth, with our high school students. And those are the numbers that you'll see for us on the bottom half and then on the right side of the chart. And that's the update for the A&amp;I Report.
Great. Board members, we will have an opportunity to discuss this agenda item as part of our regular meeting. But the next part of this special meeting is to give the opportunity for any community member to provide feedback on the data in the report. So if you would like to give feedback on the data in the report, please raise your hand to be recognized, and I'll call you up to sit at the tables here with the microphones. And please give your name and your connection to Rochester Public Schools, and your remarks will be limited to three minutes as reflected on the timer in front of me. Would anyone like to provide feedback this evening? Would anybody like to provide feedback this evening? And finally, would anybody like to provide feedback this evening? Giving everybody a chance. Hearing no feedback, this meeting, this special session is adjourned at 5:42 PM. This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:32 PM on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Buck.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Paulwood.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available at RochesterSchools.org/simply. Item three, comments to the board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the board. The purpose of comments to the board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the School Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the School Board meeting to sign up for a time slot. This form is available on the RPS website and on the Simply main page. Policy 206 and 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to board members. Choose a microphone to sit into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the School Board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer is displayed right in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker tonight is Muna Osman. Item four is information and outreach, and the first item is our Fall Sports Wrap-Up. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you Chair Nathan. I am excited to welcome our three activities directors from our high schools here. As you noticed, they are without students this time. We are trying a version of sharing with the Board and the community the accomplishments that our student athletes and participants in other activities have accomplished over the season that has just ended. And we continue to refine the ways that we recognize student accomplishment. And this time, we've got our three leaders down here to do it. And so I think, it's, Brian, are you first, or David?
I think David's first.
I think David is first, so I'll just introduce them all, and they can do it. David Perkins, of course, is our Activities Director at Century High School. Dan Christoffer is our Activities Director at Mayo High School. And Brian Urkey is our Activities Director at John Marshall High School. And thank you all for coming down and giving us a sense of the great things that our students accomplished. I think you're clicking from the podium, David.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here. It's my pleasure being here this evening with you all. I'm going to give an update on Century Fall Sports and some of the great things our Century student athletes have done this fall. Here we got a couple, a picture of a couple of our girls cross-country state qualifiers, Sophia Comfair and Jaslyn. I really don't need that.
For the folks watching at home.
It's for the millions watching at home.
I'll hold it. Sophia Comfair and Jaslyn Hannenberger were two of our state qualifiers for cross-country this fall. Had an outstanding season, and both are seniors going to be graduating. This is a picture of our adaptive soccer team. This is an event that they had where some of our boys soccer team, soccer players came and scrimmaged them one night to help them prepare for their postseason, and it paid off for them. They actually won second place at state, our adaptive soccer team. And the crowning moment for them is they beat the Dakota Hawks, which has been a bitter rival. And we've been on the short end of that thing for several years. I came to know very quickly, when I was kind of there just celebrating the win, I saw all these tears and tears of joy, and people started hugging me, and I'm like, what's going on? And so they told me the story, and then I got emotional, had to run out of there before they saw me crying. So great, great accomplishment for them. Came in second place at state against a Minneapolis team. In that state championship game, they lost eight to four. And that Minneapolis team, that was the only team that had scored four goals against them and lost to them by, by that close of a margin. So great job by this, by this very special group. My girls swim and dive, this is a photo of them at the section championship. We run our third section swim and dive championship in a row. And qualified for, had several kids qualify for state. Their celebration was to, when they won sections, everybody jumps in the pool together. They tried to get me in the pool, that did not happen. And so our qualifiers for the 200 medley were Gia Yin, John Gross, Sophia Blix, Chloe Magnuson, and Sarah Hammy. Qualifying in the 200-meter freestyle relay were Chloe Magnuson, Ally Poole, Sophia Blix, and Sarah Hammy again. Qualifying in the 50 free was Chloe Magnuson. And also qualifying individually in both the 400 freestyle and the 100 breast, breaststroke was Sophie Blix. And she set new school records in both of those events, so had a great fall season. That's my time.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mine next?
I believe we'll find out.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
First off, thanks for having us. It's always nice to come down and, and see everybody, and it's great to be recognized. And, and I know our JM community is, is happy that, that you guys recognize us, so thank you. First of all, state cross-country entrance, we had two boys that qualified for the state cross-country meet, Jaden Anderson and Aiden Feta. We had a girl, one girl's entrant, Abby Tree, who was also all-state in cross-country. And I'll mention Abby here in a little bit, again. When it comes to girls swim and dive, one of the things that, that was great is, is two years ago, we hired Lauren Kowalsinski, who was a JM grad. She went to Michigan State, graduated with, with a degree, and now she's coming back, and she's actually student teaching in, in RPS. And we're hoping to snap her up, and it's been great to have her back. Well, one of the things that she did is, is she's really helped build up our numbers, and it was evident with the girls that qualified for the state meet. In the 200 medley, we had Kayla Mingo, Abby Tree, our cross-country runner, who did both swimming and cross-country. Julia O'Grain and Mason Pettingill. For diving, Shannon Penny was nineteenth in the state for dive. In the 50 free, Abby Tree once again was twentieth. And the 100 butterfly, Julia O'Grain was third place. She was all-state. She had an All-American time consideration. So all around the, the nation, if you hit the qualifying standards, you can be All-American Automatic or consideration, depending on how the rest of the nation does. And she's a premier swimmer nationally. In the 100 free, Julia O'Grain was fourth place. She was all-state, and she qualified for an All-American time of fifty point three seconds. That was in prelims, and she had the fastest time in the state. The state championship time was fifty point four seconds. But one unique thing about Julia, her 100 fly and 100 free were consecutive races. So really, you know, Dave talks about, gets you choked up in what a kid decided to do. She placed in there, cooled down in the pool, and I'm like, she's going to miss her starting time. Right back, got still wet, back up on the blocks, back in, and ended up fourth place, so good job for her. Abby Tree once again was in the 100 breast, she took twenty-second. And the 200 free relay, Abby Tree, Shannon Penny, our diver and swimmer, Mason Pettingill, and Julia O'Grain. We had our all-state alternates, Liv Rusick, Amelia Mett, Augusta Mett, Jan Nauru. So one thing that was, another thing that was interesting about our swim team, we didn't have a lot of kids out, but the ones we had were very good. So as we qualified for the state meet, we didn't win a, we didn't win a dual meet all year. But we got to the state meet and placed in so many events that we took thirteenth place in the state, so beat a lot of the big dogs up there, so that was great. Section Coach of the Year, like I mentioned earlier, was Lauren Kowalsinski. And one AA Outstanding Swimmer of the Year was Julia O'Grain. We had two all-state boys make the all-state boys soccer team, David Carter, goalkeeper, and Kevin Lowry was a defender. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to celebrate our, our student athletes. It was a successful fall at Mayo High School. We like to celebrate three different teams this, this evening. Girls swim and dive, boys soccer, and girls tennis. Our state girls swim and dive, we had five swims at the state meet. The 200 medley, the 200 IM, 100 butterfly, and two in the 100 backstroke. The 200 medley, we placed eleventh overall, Elise Weingarten, 10th grader, Gabby Lee, 12th grader, Madeline Gow, 11th grader, and Penny Howser, 10th grader. Elise Weingarten, also the 200 IM, she placed 23rd overall. And also in the 100 backstroke, 20th overall. Madeline Gow, 100 fly, placed fifth overall, and in the 100 backstroke, sixth overall. So she had a nice representation at the, at the state meet. She also broke the team record in the 100 backstroke, which is over ten years old. So a good record for her to break. She was all-state for the second year in a row. And also probably what I'm more proud of, the Academic Gold Distinction Award for a cumulative GPA of over three point seven five. Swim alternates that we had there, Haley Carlson, Julian Yao, Julia Benke, and Lucy Kep. Our state boys soccer, lost a heartbreaker in the quarterfinals to Maple Grove. Lost it two to one in the last thirteen seconds. So they rebounded on a kick and knocked it in. The emotions of the difference in sport, we watched Maple Grove. We watched Maple Grove, the girls play the game before, and they lost one to nothing in a similar situation. So their girls ended up losing, their boys ended up winning. Very good game and between two teams. We ended up 15, one and two to end the season, Big Nine champs, section champs. Juan Abara was first team all-state. Boden Young, second team all-state. And Tim Jennings, our, our coach, was named section coach of the year. All right, there we go. Girls tennis. Girls tennis has won 27 out of the last 28 years, the Big Nine championship and the section one AA championship. So quite success there with our tennis program. This year for our individuals, we qualified six for the first time in school history. And this is the most you can, you can qualify. Singles was Clara Loftus, who ended up being the state champion. She had a very tough match and the Elk River young lady actually had to bow due to injury. But she ended up winning the state championship. Eva Loftus, fourth overall in singles. Doubles, Keely Rider, excuse me, Keely Ryder and Malia Dean, they ended up third overall. Charlotte Colby and Anna Medina, lost in three sets to the team that ended up finishing second during their quarterfinal match. So they did a wonderful job of the individuals. Before that, the individuals though, and I got to experience it this year for the first time. It's a very grueling week for them with, with the, we qualified as the team and then they had the individual as well. So proud to announce, we are state champions back-to-back years for girls tennis. So our team won the, the state championship and then these young ladies all competed on the individual level and did a, did a marvelous job. They ended the season 25 and oh, and currently they have a 51-match winning streak. So quite impressive with our, our girls tennis program. And I want to thank you all for the sports, or excuse me, the support that you guys have for, for all of our activities at Mayo High School, Century and JM. Thank you.
I think a round of applause for all of our students, our coaches and their parents. That's impressive. Thank you very much.
You're, you're not quite as fun as the students, but you do a great job.
I think we all have events tonight, so we're going to bow.
You are excused.
Thanks for my presence.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Our next item is recognitions. National Special Education Day was celebrated yesterday on December 2nd. This day commemorates the anniversary of the Federal Individual with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, signed by President Ford on December 2nd, 1975. IDEA established the right of students with disabilities to a free and appropriate public education. It also encouraged the inclusion of students with disabilities in mainstream classrooms and the use of individualized education plans. Most importantly, this day gives us the opportunity to thank our RPS staff that provide our students with what is needed to meet their individual special education needs. And that list is long. Teachers, education support professionals, instructional coaches, technology consultants, audiologists, and speech-language pathologists, occupational and physical therapists, psychologists, and our directors and coordinators of Special Education Services and Chief Academic Officer in the Office of Academics. RPS Special Education provides services for qualifying children and students from birth to age 21. We are committed to providing a free and appropriate education designed to meet the unique needs of students with disabilities and providing the support and related services necessary to implement the special education programs and assure that students and parents' rights are followed in this process. If you are interested in learning more about Special Education Services and providing input to S, to RPS programs, please consider joining our Special Education Advisory Council. SEAC advises RPS on the development of programs and services to meet the special education needs of children and families. Parents and guardians who represent children with a variety of disabilities are encouraged to attend will be joined by our Special Education Administrators. You can get more information on the Special Education Advisory Council on the Get Involved page on the district website. Our second recognition tonight is International Volunteer Day, which is celebrated every year on December 5th. It is a day when volunteers are acknowledged and the spirit of volunteerism is promoted at the local, national, and international levels. Here at RPS, our Volunteers in Education Program, or VIe, has a long tradition of bringing parents, grandparents, retired teachers and staff, other family members and community members into schools to support our students with their time and talents. We welcome volunteers in our schools and our teachers, staff, and principals are so grateful for the caring presence you bring to our buildings and the positive interactions you have with our students. You can apply to be a volunteer on the Get Involved page on our RPS website and the link is provided in this agenda item ensembles. Item 4.3 is Board Member Committee Updates. Does any board member have updates from their committee since the last meeting or any information to share? Director Marvin?
Yes, the Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee, Matt. This is a group of parents and community members who are interested in learning more about the opportunities our schools provide and the programs that exist. The last meeting was about post-secondary opportunities provided for high school students and some ninth grades, ninth grade is high school, younger students. And there was a wealth of information for those who attended. And there were, there was an excellent attendance here too. They went over the various ways that students can get college credit while they're in high school, how they can get that credit while they're at their school or off-site at a program like C-Tech. They also provided information about where the community, parents and students especially, can find out how those credits will transfer to a college, how they can apply, fill out the FAFSA, and the various kind of post, opportunities that exist for continuing education after students graduate from high school. I was not aware of all the opportunities that this district provides, information. And some of the people who were present didn't either. So we know we're going to have to continue to make sure that in every place and in every way, we let people know that when their kids are in high school, they can get college credit. They can get real experiences that will help them get jobs immediately after high school. But it was, it's a great committee and tremendous amount of, of information. And they also provide dinner. So it's a win-win.
Win-win. Director Workman?
This Friday and Saturday, the Delegate Assembly of the Minnesota School Board Association will be meeting in Minneapolis. Just to make a note, the MSBA does pay all of our expenses. There is no cost to the school district for this. Friday evening, David Schultz will be the presenter. And he is a distinguished university professor of political science and legal studies at Hamlin University. Schultz is one of Minnesota's most noted political commentators. He will discuss Minnesota's current political climate and provide analysis of the 2024 elections. That could be very interesting. The assembly meets the next day to review the resolutions that have been brought forward. And we will have a report for you at our next regular meeting on December 17. Did I mention that Karen goes to?
I'm attending as well.
You just did. Any other reports, Director Garcia?
Yeah, it's not a committee report, but the last school board session that we had, I mentioned that I had gone to see Century's Fall Show, their fall musical, which was wonderful. So since then, I've also, I also had the opportunity to see Mayo's Rent and John Marshall's Mean Girls. And both of the shows were phenomenal. I don't think I laughed so hard at a show as I did when I was watching Mean Girls. And in Rent, I also laughed and cried and mood with the audience. And I think just as a reflection, because I've been seeing these shows for four years, it's amazing, even with the very apparent talent, how much the programs have grown over the last four years. And I think that my perception was that a lot of that had to do, not just with the talent on the stage, behind the stage, and the staff supporting the students, but the parents, like the booster clubs also seem to have grown. And they're putting a lot of, you know, they're back into helping these kids put on some, I think, even college or maybe even off-broadway level shows. They were really great. So if you have the opportunity in the future to see other shows, I would highly recommend.
I might. I, I agree with what Dr. Garcia did. And also I've been in that same timeframe. I've watched some of those kids grow up in the roles. I was like, oh, you were in the back and now you have a lead. That's pretty, that's pretty awesome. And then like you were like four feet and now you're six feet. Kind of thing. That's a lot of fun to see.
Yeah.
And I was able to see Rent. And one of the things I appreciated was in their program. They gave a lot of information about how this was a broader educational experience than just the process of putting on a musical. They talked about the historical lessons and sociological lessons they learned from putting on the play, the conversations that they had. They provided resources related to some of the, the subject matter of the play. And they did it with such emotion and such spirit. And I, I agree, we are very fortunate to have the, the adults who commit extraordinary hours of time and the students who have the talent, both on the stage and behind the scenes, to provide these opportunities. And they are open to anybody in the public. So I agree, I encourage anybody to catch the, whatever may be offered later this year and then next year's fall musicals.
Director Marvin?
One more thing quickly. I, I know all of us are really impressed with the number of students in this district who are talented in so many different ways and who are, who are real leaders. And they organize events at their schools and district-wide all the time. I attended one event at Century High School for National American Indian Heritage Month. And Tucker Queeton, one of the Native American liaisons, was invited to provide in the auditorium during all three lunches, information about his heritage and about the heritage of the Native American populations and the history and the current situation, the current leadership that our Native American citizens continue to, continue to lead and, and the important role in history that they played and their current role in our making history that they're, they're still playing.
All right. Thank you, board members. Our next items are our consent agenda, items 5.1 through 5.7. Would any board member like any item removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Our next item is 6.1. Our focus topic is the Science of Reading Update, the role of PLCs in MTSS. Superintendent Pecow?
Thank you, Chair Nathan, and board members. It is alphabet soup with PLCs and MTSS. I see some colleagues, Mona Perkins, our Chief Academic Officer, Jill Dunn, our Coordinator of Tiered Support, and Justine Trueblood, who is our MTSS facilitator. Board members, I think one of the reasons that initiatives in education don't achieve their aspirations is that leaders either don't go deep enough in understanding and implementing them or they start chasing off to the next shiny new priority and don't work the plan. This is an example of our effort not to do that. Because you've heard a lot about MTSS and literacy and you're now going to hear more. And you're not only going to hear more about that subject in general, you're going to hear about one critical component of a large and very complex system, the role of professional learning communities in implementing multi-tiered systems of support. So I want to thank these three leaders who are out there guiding the work. And this won't be the last time that we'll be digging into the work that we're doing on multi-tiered systems of support in literacy. So take it away and thanks again.
Thanks for having us. Again, I'm Mona Perkins. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves again.
I'm Justine Trueblood. I'm a TOSA, a teacher on special assignment for this year as MTSS facilitator and it's grant-funded for two years.
And.
You were on. Now you're off. You're off.
It's green.
It's green. Okay.
I'm Jill Dunn and I am the Coordinator of Tiered Supports.
And the three of us have really worked closely together this, this fall. Prior to this fall, Jill, you ran most of it. Like we're, was really working hard for, to lay the groundwork. And then this year, we've really dug in to start working with teachers all through the, the PLCs. So the PLC work is super critical because ultimately you can design whatever system you want, but who are the people that are really doing the work? And it's the teachers that are with the kids every day. So they have to have a solid understanding of the process, what you're asking them to do, and then they have to be able to actually execute. And that just requires some support. And that's what this year so far has really been. So this year, we decided MTSS can be, you can look at everything through the MTSS window or umbrella, but we decided to really focus on literacy this year. Once that infrastructure is laid, it's really easy to, to implement it with behavior and math and all the other things. But we needed our focus to be literacy so that, keep it really narrow and let us get really good at it. So the, the core components of the multi-tiered system of supports, all of them, the, all the work in the PLCs really cover all of these components. And it's the infrastructure for continuous improvement. It's the collaborative linked team. So the teams, they work interdependently, not independently. So you've got the leadership team informs the PLC work, which informs the problem-solving team and back in the other way. So you need to have solid communication and just really good teaming across the board. We have multi-layered practices and supports. That's where you see the interventions that, that we'll talk about tonight. Assessment, all the way from universal screening down to like specific classroom assessments, diagnostics, progress monitoring, like all of that. And then database decision-making, which really ultimately ends up like, what you do with the information is the hardest part. That's always the hardest part for teachers. We end up for many years, people have been data-rich, information-poor, you don't know what to do with it. And the, it's worthless to have all that information if you're not using it to actually have it impact instruction and have it impact instruction appropriately. You have to know what exactly the data is telling you and what interventions align with it. And that's been all the work. So here's a little bit of history of PLCs, not like exclusive to RPS, but in the world, in the world of education. So in the early stages, teachers really operated independently. It was more of like sage on the stage, the teacher had all the knowledge. That is no longer the case. And over time, the, the evolution was more towards collaboration, wanting really to leverage the collective expertise of, of the teaching community, just collaborate in planning and you, we wanted to, people wanted, stopped wanting to be isolated and alone in, in their four walls and just shut their door. Because if you've ever been a teacher, you know, sometimes the teacher next door is doing a much better job with certain kids and it doesn't do you any good if you have some of those students to not tap them on the shoulder and say, what's happening? So now our, our, this is what we're aiming for. The role of PLCs really being around collaboration and collective inquiry. We're wanting to figure out what is getting in the way of student achievement and then develop ideas and enhance our teaching practices. So this isn't just about, I did this, what was the result and we move on. But how can I as an educator actually impact student data? Because if I, if I can't impact it, what's the point of me being there? And then just implementing new ideas in the classrooms and examining outcomes and refining our practices.
So we're going to spend some time painting a picture for you about what the work of our PLCs currently is in Rochester Public Schools and walking through some of the work that their, our buildings are doing right now. So our focus of our PLCs is universal core instruction. So that's the instruction that every student gets. It's grade-level, standards-based instruction. And it's provided to all students. We monitor the effectiveness of that instruction through our universal screeners and that happens three times a year, a year. And we use the FastBridge assessment to do that for our literacy work. And so we use the FastBridge to be able to see whether or not students are responding to core instruction. And our target is 80% of students would be responding to that instruction or performing on track. So that gives us some, an indication of whether what we're doing is working for the majority of our students. When we think about moving then to core interventions, our PLCs work quickly and efficiently to. to use the screening data to determine whether or not they need to do something with the whole group to respond to a need that the students have. So when less than seventy percent of students are at benchmark, that's when we start to trigger a core intervention. And student, or the teachers use the information from FastBridge to kind of guide that. It usually gives them a recommendation for one of the five pillars of reading, or sometimes more than one, but they use the pillars of reading to determine what additional instruction is needed to fill a gap. That is not replacement of core instruction, so it never supplants the grade-level instruction that is happening. It is in addition to. We're just trying to backfill and fill gaps that students have. Typically, when we think about how often that instruction is delivered, it's usually five, we recommend five to ten minutes a day, four to five times a week, because we know that more often, for less time, will actually give us better bang for our buck to be able to fill those gaps rather than, like, a once a week for a whole-class period intervention. In addition to that, when we talk about a group, when we're looking at this data in PLCs, sometimes the whole group intervention is a whole class. Sometimes it's a whole grade level. In our high schools and our middle schools, sometimes we're looking at specific sections. So it kind of depends on what we talk about with a group, who is going to get that whole group intervention. And we use, we are building, we're in the process, we have some resources available for these whole group interventions. There are some things provided through our FastBridge assessment suite. But we're in the process this year of doing some more resource mapping to provide resources to teachers to do that instruction for core intervention.
So as we've started this work this year, we have noticed some successes that are worth celebrating. And the first one is that we have built on our previous knowledge through a partnership with the University of Minnesota and the Fast for Success training. We have built on that, and we are now integrating some of the new frameworks from the READ Act and the professional development offered there. We're noticing that our teachers are becoming more comfortable with data analysis and the interpretation of data for instructional decision-making. So we're seeing an increase in data literacy. Regarding problem solving, our staff are becoming proficient in using what we call the problem-solving model. And that model walks you through identifying a problem, analyzing that problem, and then designing and implementing a solution, or in our case, potentially an intervention, and then evaluating that, and then you start that cycle all over again. So sometimes it's referred to as Plan Do Study Act. We've heard it called the Problem-Solving Process. There's lots of different phrases for it, but our staff are becoming familiar with using that. And then finally, we're gaining confidence in our skills in delivering focused literacy interventions within the classroom. Some of the challenges that we've noticed is that while we are doing our best to find creative solutions to the, in the, within the existing schedule to provide intervention, we are missing, in order to do so, we are sometimes missing out on other opportunities. So we might be missing out on instruction in other subjects or pulling from electives. But within the constraints of the current schedule, we're trying to be creative, but we're finding that we don't necessarily have enough time. For our secondary teachers, this is new learning, and they are still learning the fundamentals of the science of reading. And there's also a mind shift that needs, a mindset shift that needs to happen that we're working on when it comes to collective responsibility for student learning, particularly at the secondary level. Additionally, we're finding some, that there's some challenges with the, with the schedule in terms of time constraint for collaboration. So our existing schedule isn't supporting meeting during the school day, so we have to find time to do that before or after school. And with limited contract hours and other competing priorities, sometimes things get bumped. And then finally, there's a lack of consensus at this point on what the PLC expectations are. So we don't have universally agreed upon frequency and duration of PLC meetings, either between our administrators, our staff, our teachers' union, et cetera. So we all kind of have, at this point, we're lacking that consensus.
So thinking about moving towards strategic support and intervention for our students, our PLCs this year are encouraged to include our interventionists, our special education teachers, and our multilingual teachers as part of the PLCs when we're doing this work, so that they can provide their expertise and knowledge and experience when starting to think about some further interventions and students who might need additional support. So our teams, the PLC teams really work, once they've done that work, looking at the core, the core data and how the effectiveness of their core instruction, we move towards which students need additional support. And so our process this year has been a little bit different than years past, where we're really trying to be intentional about identifying student needs. So we use the universal screener to identify, kind of put students in, like, buckets of need for us, where we can identify these students need additional diagnostic, so that we can find out more from them. So we use some, a couple of different diagnostic assessments when there's a trigger that we need that. And that, those assessments are done by classroom teachers, by our interventionists. Every, it's kind of all hands on deck right now to make sure that we can get those assessments done with students. But those assessments allow us to go from, this student needs phonics instruction, which is kind of what the FastBridge screener tells us, to, this student needs specific instruction in our controlled vowels. So that way, we're able to really drill down to the skill that they need. And by doing that, we can match instruction and then more quickly close those learning gaps for students. From there, sometimes we identify students that are significantly behind their peers, and that's kind of a trigger for a tier-three intervention right away for those students. But we're looking at local data to determine whether or not that's needed. So the first piece is identifying the students, and we do that through our diagnostic data and the universal screening data. The second piece is designing the interventions. So our PLC teams are using that diagnostic data to collectively group students who have similar needs and determine how can we meet those needs with evidence-based practice and strategies. So for example, right now in our middle schools, we're identifying there's a lot of students that have, their oral reading fluency rate is low. Their accuracy might be great. It might be ninety-five percent or above, but their rate is low. And we know that impacts comprehension in the long run. So how can we build in some intervention for those students for oral reading practice or repeated reading in order to help boost their oral reading rate? So we're looking at collectively, what does a group of students need, and how do we address that collectively? Once we move into tier two, we also start to think about how do we identify the specific skill that the students are working on and also monitor progress for that, but we'll speak more to that later.
We're running out of time.
I know. We are running out.
Yeah.
Okay, so some challenge, or some successes we're seeing here is that we are continuing to gain clarity on the why of, and the how of addressing student needs within the classroom environment. We are also noticing more usage of standardized terminology across our sites. We're narrowing our focus on targeted literacy needs, as Justine said. Instead of those broad categories, we're moving into that specific diagnostic through the, with their assessment tool source distribution is impacting our ability to provide interventions to a high level of rigor. So thinking specifically about the disparity in the number of students who might potentially need an intervention and then the resources we have available, such as the staff, the time, and the materials, we're seeing a discrepancy there. At the elementary level, there is a lack of, with the lack of common intervention times across our grade levels, it makes it difficult to coordinate a team approach to delivery of the interventions. And at the secondary, we have to consider the, the need to balance the delivery of an intervention with also the progression towards graduation and continuing to accrue credits. Additionally, at secondary, we're running into some limited resources that are available just generally for interventions for secondary students that are developmentally appropriate and are not that for elementary students. Trying to adapt what we have for our elementary kids for our secondary students has proven to be a challenge. And then finally, some competing priorities. So for instance, with the new ELA implementation of the wit and wisdom curriculum, while that work is highly critical and completely necessary, it does limit the teacher availability for the deep discussions and intervention planning, and ultimately, they just sometimes don't have the bandwidth.
So in order to make sure that our progress monitor, or our students are making progress, we have to monitor their progress, right? And so we make sure that our, the PLCs are working to identify what is a assessment tool that's going to match the needs of, the, sorry, it felt like my mic. My mic wasn't working for a second. To match the needs of the skill that they're teaching. And they use that tool to be able to track over time whether or not students are making progress. We are working hard this year in our PLCs to make sure that we're monitoring that progress monitoring data more, more frequently so that we can intervene quickly if we see that something's not working or we need an instructional change. Sometimes that change might be, we're going to increase the number of sessions that a student has in an intervention. We might increase the duration. They might meet for twenty minutes instead of ten. But how can we respond quickly? And then if we see if the strategy or skill instruction isn't working, we might shift that entirely and try a different skill. So the goal is that we keep an eye on that pretty regularly to make sure that students are making progress. And if they aren't, after several iterations of tier-two interventions, that might be a trigger for us to think about more intensive tier-three interventions for a student, too.
So then regarding progress monitoring, we are getting clearer about how to progress monitor. We are gaining insights into monitoring the skill acquisition as well as the movement towards grade-level benchmarks. For our secondary teachers, again, this is new learning, and with new learning comes new behaviors. And so we are in the beginning stages of establishing effective progress monitoring practices at the secondary level. And that's expected and totally normal, and we're just excited that we're in the beginning stages of establishing that. Our classroom teachers are becoming more attuned to their students' individual needs, which then ultimately, because they're more attuned to those needs, reduces their reliance on an interventionist and frees up our interventionist to provide those intensive supports at tier-three. And then coming back to collective responsibility for student learning, because we're more attuned to their needs, that builds that on that collective responsibility. And then we're working on the efficiency of our data systems. We have efforts underway to align our progress monitoring measures with our, our EduClaimer data warehouse. And we're seeing that that is being used, we're seeing, we're seeing some growth in the use of EduClaimer. Regarding some challenges, again, while we are able to use that data more effectively, and we are seeing that people are accessing EduClaimer, we still have a significant amount of staff who are discomfort, are not comfortable navigating that platform. So there's just some, some discomfort there. And then we have secondary progress monitoring, some limitations there regarding human capital. Really just thinking, like, we don't have, the staff that are available to pull a student and potentially complete a progress monitor with them, we, we don't have the people available to do that on a regular basis. And then finally, the ongoing integration of our EduClaimer data warehouse is, it's proving, it's, it's a challenge in, in terms of integrating that within, with all of our systems. Working on it, but it is a challenge. Finally, so some next steps. One, we want to continue to move forward. So we've seen some great momentum, and we've had some really nice progress this year, and we want to continue that. And we want to use that as a lever to, from which to continue to launch forward and build on. For some of those gaps and some of the barriers that were brought to your attention, there are some short-term actions here that are within the scope of our mighty team, our mighty team of three, which has grown since the last time we were here, if you recall. And the first one is working on those anchor standards or the prioritized learning. So the Office of Academics is clarifying those so that we have a common understanding of what tier-one literacy is across all of our grade bands. The next one is the, the flexible scheduling models. We have a work group for both the elementary, the middle school, and the high school level that is meeting. Currently, actually, we're in the middle of our meetings, and we're working on developing a proposal to submit to Dr. Pecel on some recommendations on schedule adjustments to provide time within the day to provide, for intervention delivery. We're continuing to work on our resource map. That's the resource map for K through twenty-one. That is all of the resources that we have determined are effective and have an evidence base behind them that will be available across all of our sites. And those are matched to specific skills, and then we also link them to specific progress monitoring tools. And then finally, we are working on some training modules for our staff when it comes to EduClaimer and developing some customized resources that are unique to our local context rather than reliance on, full reliance on the vendor training. We're trying to adapt that and make that a little more accessible to our staff. So we are over. Thanks for bearing with us. What questions might you have of us?
Board members? Director Cook?
Well, thank you very much for the update, and I, I don't think it's ever going to be too much of this topic, for me at least. I continue to think that this is the strategically important priority for our district. It addresses lots of issues all at once. And so thank you for, for leading the work and for helping to shape this transformation, because it, it really is a huge lift. On the resource mapping, are all of the identified resources available throughout the district? Because I, I continue to hear about sites where interventions are dependent on securing, you know, subscriptions supported by PTSAs and things like that. And I, that's great when that kind of thing is available. But for the resource mapping that your team is preparing, can you tell me a little bit more about those resources and how they were identified and how, how they're available, I guess?
Yeah, so those are, what's included on the resource map is something that is intended to be delivered across all sites. So we're only putting things on the resource map that we have the capacity to support across all of our sites, either elementary, middle school, high school, et cetera. We do have sites that then are opting to provide additional things that they are not necessarily working from the resource map. They might have supplemented that on their own. And we're, we're learning from them, because as they implement those, we're learning whether, whether those are, those work. We're learning about the constraints behind that and determining if then that's something that we want to bring forward as a, as a strategy to include on the resource map for all sites. Right now, I would say that there, it's not moving fast enough for our sites. Our sites are like, you gotta give us more. But we're trying to really make sure that we're spending the time doing the research and ensuring that the strategies and that the tools that we have available on there are evidence-based and have been vetted and proven to be effective. There's lots of things that are out there, but we want to make sure that if we're sinking the time and the effort into the training of our staff on those materials and also the purchase of the materials, we want to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck.
And I would add to that, too, that part of the work that we're doing around the resource mapping this year is really doing research to make sure that things are evidence-based and that there is evidence that the intervention will be effective. I think one of the things that we're running into is sites that have purchased things maybe aren't implementing them as they were intended. And so we aren't going to see the results from those interventions that they've purchased or those programs or whatever, because they haven't been able to implement them with fidelity in the way that they were designed. And so we're working on some recommendations around that, too, about if we're going to have schools purchase their own resources to supplement maybe what we do have or don't have, that, what are the recommendations around making decisions about that, too?
And we have to be careful to not have the map be too big. If you give people way too much, you've given them nothing, because they can't dig into it. And in all my years doing this work, you can't, like, And, um, in all my years doing this work, you can't, like handing somebody a resource map without saying, okay, I'm going to walk you through, like, what does this actual intervention look like, is often not helpful. And that's why people will say, I need something else. This isn't enough. No, it actually is enough. You just need to learn how to use it. And, and that's part of the learning process. So it's, there's more to it, I think, than just creating the map. I think we have to walk alongside the teachers and, and how to actually use, um, the resources. I remember years ago, I was helping teachers, I was doing a professional development that I thought I could do, teach two interventions in a hour block. Cause I, I just thought the teachers had enough background and we were only able to get through one. We had to have a second session to get through the other. It takes time. It takes time because even all the learning they did the summer with Core, the application of it is very different. And so you, we just have to keep that in mind. So yes, people, it, it might feel like we're not moving fast enough, but it, we are. You can't go too fast or you're not, it's not going to happen. You gotta go deep.
And the other, the last piece I'll say about the resource map is that part of this is also identifying gaps. So it's a needs assessment at the same time as it's map building. So we are working to figure out where do we have gaps that maybe we need to figure out a district-wide response to that gap for, like, if we don't have a great resource, like we were saying, for teaching phonics skills at the high school level, we need to figure out how do we fill that gap so that we aren't asking teachers to use elementary materials with high school students.
Director Barlow?
Uh, thanks for your presentation, uh, under your next steps. And, um, I'm excited to hear that, uh, the role that anchor standards and prioritize learning will play hugely important. Two quick questions. In terms of your universal screening data, um, at what point are parents made aware or, uh, involved in, in this process?
That's a really, really good question. So parents, if, if a student is flagged as being, as potentially having reading difficulties, especially in K through three, you have to give them the, um, you have to notify families of the score, the areas that they're struggling, your, your intervention plan, like all of that has to be done. And so that was all done right around conference time. We recommended that, um, the law is K three. We said it's good practice to do it higher than that too. And we had, we created a form that also then outlined for families. If your child is struggling in this area of reading, here's some strategies you can, you can do. And some of the, uh, principals of the older grades also wanted that us to create the form for the older grades. So we created them up through sixth grade. So, so yeah, families are made aware, they're made aware all three times around the universal screening, but we really should be in, in communication with families regularly. It shouldn't be a shock. So.
And, and then finally, um, is there a role that AI may play in providing instructional support or a tool that teachers may be able to utilize in, uh, maybe bridging the gap or, um, more actively monitoring where a student may be? Have you guys considered that or are you, uh, in any way utilizing that or delving into that?
So I have in the past used it, like, okay, I, I need, I know this kid's working on these sounds. Can, can it give me a, um, I'll ask ChatGPT to, to spit out like a paragraph that focuses on these phonics skills? That's super helpful because one area that is always really hard is having like the actual, um, text for kids to read. Cause you don't just want them reading words in isolation. You want them to read real text as well. That area is growing and I know we've got some folks working on ways we can incorporate AI. It's still an area that we definitely have room to grow in. But yes, it, and there's actually some, I'll think of the name of the website that's. I want to call it's Magic School Bus, but that's not what it's called. I think it's called Magic Schools, um, that has all kinds of stuff on there, really made for educators. So yes, there's stuff out there and.
We do have some sites that are also doing some work. We're using that for accommodations. So thinking about making literacy more accessible, um, particularly at the secondary level. So if we have somebody who's working on early literacy skills, it shouldn't preclude them from being able to engage in a high-level discussion about a literature text. Um, and so there's ways that AI can adapt the text to bring it to their reading levels so that then they can engage in those conversations and engage in those thoughtful discussions. We just have to be cautious that as we're providing those accommodations, we're also then providing the instruction to continue to grow those skills and not just stopping.
Thank you.
Director McLachlan?
Um, I had a couple of questions about, first of all, can, it just dawned on me as you were talking about the PLCs, that, do those look different at an elementary versus a secondary level? Can you talk about that a little bit? I'm just curious enough, if someone walked in to one of those meetings in elementary or secondary, what would be the differences that they would see?
I think you should answer that question. You've been in all, you've been in the sites for that, so.
I would say that our elementaries are ahead on the work and so they've been doing this for probably four years and are pretty well-versed in the routines around looking at the universal screening data and then doing some diagnostic work and identifying, um, groups of students. In fact, they were ahead of us in many sites this year that they were already, they'd already identified students and they had worked through some of that before we even rolled out some of our new processes this year. Um, on a typical day, um, in some of the buildings I've been at, teachers are usually looking at, um, if it's not around a universal screening window, they're looking at formative assessments that they've created that are helping guide their day-to-day instruction or their core tier one instruction. And then also having conversations, looking at the progress monitoring. Sometimes what I've seen is like they rotate meetings between, we're going to look at Core Instruction today and then we're going to look at interventions the next day and rotate back and forth to make sure that they're hitting both. Right now in elementaries, there's a lot of focus on the Whit and Wisdom curriculum. So they're doing a lot of Core Instruction, um, conversation and working towards improving their practice.
And their grade level.
And their grade level.
PLCs are grade level at the elementary, secondary.
That's kind of where my question came from. Like, you know, grade level, like even outside of literacy, they're, they're teaching all different types of content where a high school would just be a math teacher. And does that look different for those different types of roles?
Like you're talking the structure?
Even, even the structure or the content too. I mean, like what they're talking about.
Some of the secondary sites, um, there's some autonomy in how they do PLCs. And so some of our sites, a lot of our sites choose to do, um, content area PLCs. So they might have a vertical PLC with sixth through eighth grade ELA teachers. Some are just doing grade level content PLCs. So it's just the sixth grade ELA teachers. Um, and some buildings are doing, still at secondary, doing grade-wide level PLCs where all sixth grade teachers meet together. Um, there's challenges and benefits around all of those models. The work that we're doing with, um, rolling out the processes around data, um, data-driven decision-making is happening, we're trying to, it's really happening this year, um, in the vertical PLCs with sixth through twelfth grade. So when we work with middle schools, we're working with sixth through eighth grade ELA teachers and interventionists. And then we get all of the literacy teachers together at the high schools too. So that's where this work is kind of living right now.
Thank you. And then my second question, um, using the literacy in the secondary schools has been a much an interest of mine. So it caught my interest about the human capital limitations at the secondary. Can you talk a little bit more about that? I guess my question is related to if there's limitations like that. Are there like waiting lists and slower delivery? Or is it skipped over or accommodated some other way?
At this point, um, our sites at the secondary level are trying to figure out what they have the capacity to support based off of the, the resources they have available. So, um, every site's kind of doing it a little differently. But for instance, one of our high schools said, we have the capacity at this point to provide, um, intensive interventions for about twenty-five students. So when you think of, you know, the almost a thousand students in a high school building, twenty-five of those students are getting a high intense intervention. There's probably a lot more.
Based on data then.
It's based off of data. Yep, yep. They did, they use the data to determine who those twenty-five students might be. But that's where that human capital limitation comes in. We just don't have the capacity to provide more support than that because they're trying to pull somebody from another class hour or they're trying to accommodate and make those adjustments. When it comes to tier two, um, we're working on helping the sites kind of figure out a model for how tier two can be delivered within the classroom, whether that be in just ELA classes exclusively or whether that be across all content areas. The progress monitoring for that is where the challenge is really, really proving to be difficult because somebody has to then, if we're providing those levels of supports to a student, we need to be progress monitoring to make the, to, to see if what we're doing is working. And the ability to not only provide that instruction in the classroom plus the instruction on the standards and then progress monitor individual students within that forty-five-minute or fifty-two-minute class period, we, we don't have, it's, it's, at this point, I would say we're, we're doing the best we can. We don't want to say we're giving permission to skip it, but we're, we're doing the best we can.
And I think it's just thinking of things differently. I think there's more capacity there than we're currently using, but you also have to remember, high school teachers are not trained to be foundational reading teachers. And so to get them to that place is going to take a lot more, like they have a lot more learning to do than elementary teachers do. And then helping them see, how can I do things slightly differently in my class? If I have eight kids in my classroom that need to be progress monitored, I don't need to progress monitor them all at the same time. I can do one or two one day, one or two the next day. They're one-minute timed tests. They're quick. Like there's ways around it, but if you've never done it, like we're just, I, to me at the high school, we're laying the groundwork and in a year or two, like we're going to continue to make progress. So yes, yes, I don't want to like dismiss all of those things. And I think there's a, there's a lot of potential there. And I think as people learn it and feel more comfortable and it becomes second nature, you're going to see teachers way more willing and not feeling like they don't have the bandwidth.
And a couple of follow-ups on that. I appreciate that, but also look at the value of that instruction, you know, once they get how to do it.
Oh, yeah.
It provides such value to those students at that secondary level. Linking it back though to one of Director Barlow's questions though, that even if kids aren't getting those interventions, are the parents notified of the, when you talked about the best practices earlier, would they get information that they could seek resources if they felt that that would be helpful to their student? If it, if we don't have the capacity in the building, will they know that there are things that they can do as parents?
Sure. So as, at the system level, I haven't, like I personally haven't given guidance on that. And I think that's an area that should probably be a next step for us to figure out what, because I also think the other hard thing, it's a lot easier for, at the, at, when the kids are young to say, here's some resources, because they're all meant for the younger kids. And that's where it gets to be super tricky with the, with the older students. Ultimately, if they're really struggling by the time they get into middle and high school, you'd think they would have been identified at that point. Right now, I think as we're still trying to clean stuff up from COVID and all effects of that, you're seeing more kids have gotten through that, that maybe weren't identified. But that really shouldn't, like over time, that shouldn't be the case. Our system should be streamlined enough and strong enough that the kids are truly receiving early intervention, because we know research says that's what's best. And we catch them earlier so that you're not having so many at, as they get older.
Okay, thank you.
Director? Oh, no, Director Mark. No, okay.
I love that you guys love literacy as much as we do.
See any other hands over here? No? So I had one question. You referred to, um, I'm going to find it here. How, um, identification might identify, uh, students who would need tier three intensive right away. But can you tell me a little bit about the role that PLCs have or don't have in the tier three interventions?
Yeah, the, the PLCs kind of talk through who needs it and then it goes to a problem-solving team. And I think an area that, the number of kids that require tier three should be a much smaller number than it currently is. So we want to keep, I mean, you, you really, we want to try to hit as many kids as we can within the PLCs and really focus on that. And then once we see that a kid really is not making progress or they're super, super discrepant, um, then they go to the problem-solving team and they work through it with a, it's a different team. But the communication should still kind of go back and forth. But that's why they weren't included in that. Yeah, the, the classroom teachers don't provide tier three instruction.
However, I will add that those students who are receiving tier three interventions continue to receive those interventions in tier two within the classroom as well. So they're getting layered on and not necessarily replaced.
And that's part of the reason why we're having classroom teachers do the diagnostics with the students because, and that's a piece of new learning for our secondary teachers for sure. So that they're aware of the skilled, like gaps that those students have and how they can support that in their classrooms, even if the student is getting, um, strategic intervention with another teacher or another staff member.
Yeah, that just can't be our, tier three can't be our solution. You'll never intervene your way out. Like numerically, mathematically, it's impossible. So.
All right, well, thank you. And thank you. Board members?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item seven point one is a monitoring item. This is the Achievement and Integration Report. This would be the opportunity for board members to ask questions and discuss the report that was presented during our special session. Assistant Pickup?
Glad to take any questions or comments. We, as, uh, Mr. Ruffin pointed out, did not detail for you during the presentation, the many initiatives we have underway to address the goals from literacy to diversifying our teaching force to our post-secondary readiness and, and the other areas in our plan. But there's a lot going on and it's described in the written report that's available to board members and that's available on our school board website. So if you want to dig behind a bit, behind what we're doing with the numbers, that is a resource. I'm glad to certainly talk about, uh, any of that further now, but I think absent that, uh, board review of this, uh, plan will be sufficient for us to meet the state requirement, which requires us to fill out a form that, uh, requires us to put the date of your discussion of this issue into our state report.
Director Barlow?
Uh, two quick things. Free and reduced lunch. It was noted that, um, in terms of duplicity, that, uh, you know, students can be counted or they're only counted once, but they could be potentially counted twice. Example was a black student could also find themselves being the free and reduced lunch category. I was curious, is that also true with white students? I, I'm sure it is. And the point is, I guess, uh, and this leads me to the second, uh, observation. Uh, I appreciate Mr. Ruffin, uh, distinguishing between the fact that while there was a decrease in a white student, uh, participation, it was not due because it was not due to the fact that other students of color had, if you will, taken those slots or positions. And I, you know, want to, I suppose, call that out because sometimes I hear that, well, of course, the numbers are decreasing for whites because other students are getting their positions. And I guess I just wanted, uh, uh, be, be sure that I understood that other students are not getting those positions. And, and maybe I'm not saying it the, the best of ways. Is there another way to perhaps communicate that to, uh, the, the public who may have thought, maybe as I did, well, what's up with that? Is there another way to potentially see that?
Yeah, I think, Director Barlow, it's a point that is incredibly important to make in this day and age. There is not a finite number of post-secondary credits that we could earn. So as many kids as want to take the classes and reach, um, for, so it's not an, it's not a finite resource. And when we looked at that data, it was of the total number of students in each group, how many earned a college credit, a post-secondary credit? And each cohort is different, of course. And so the, uh, the, the decrease in the percentage of the total number of white students who, over those two years, earned a post-secondary credit was, um, certainly something that's important to note, but actually more students did it. The percentage of students was lower, but we increased the number of students. And that's why digging underneath this data. And I think as you point out, the percentage and the number of white kids who earned college credit while in high school was totally. credit while in high school was totally independent from the percentage of African-American students, or Latino students, or low-income students. And so, it is not people dividing up a shrinking pie, it's as many kids as choose to and we can help earn that credit can do so. So, a, a really important point to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Director Workman?
So, Dr. Pickell kind of stole my point, but I'm going to make it anyway. I think there's always a tension between the numbers and the percentages. For example, if you have a cohort of ten students and all ten of them meet the expectation, wow, a hundred percent. But if the following year, you have twenty students in that cohort, and fifteen of them meet the goal, that's a seventy-five percent, and we think, why has it gone down? So, I think both of those things are, are important, and I'm, I'm really glad that you made the point that, that you did, and that we also have the information for both numbers and percentages. I think, I look at this as, well, maybe you didn't meet the goal of whatever percentage it was, but the, there are students, they are still on track to meeting that goal, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is, is that you have a choice, students are either on track or not on track for the purposes of this report, not, hey, you know, what's the growth model? How are students doing? And we don't need, I don't need that information particularly, but I think that's something always to keep in mind when we get information like this.
Yeah, and, and, to reinforce that point, the way the state mandated Achievement and Integration Report works, for that indicator, we can only put in one measure of on-track, not-on-track. But we have a goal that sets goals for different groups, black, white, Hispanic, free and reduced. And so, as Mr. Ruffin and I and our research director talked about what single measure to put in, we were conservative. We were tough graders on ourselves. But the reality was, as we saw with the FastBridge data, as we saw with the other data, there was some mix in there, so. I don't know, if there's anything else that you, will you want to ask, add, certainly can do that.
Yeah, I'll just add, too, like, these were goals that we set for ourselves, so these were not goals that were given to us by the state, so we did not reach our own standards. So, we set our standards pretty high by asking for four and a half percent. So, even though we reached two point seven, it's still good, but we, we set these limits. It wasn't limits that were given to us, so I just wanted to make that clear. And I think, to your point, Dr. Barlow, I think it's important to note that, as, as far as the example of white students, we're comparing white students to themselves. So, we're not comparing them against any other groups, so their percentage may have gotten lower, but they still had an increase, so more white students were getting the credit. I think it's important to think about that, because we're not comparing them to other subgroups, we're comparing them to themselves. So, when you do that, we'll see that more of them receive that credit, and that's what we should be focusing on.
Thank you.
Can I let Dr. Marvin go and come back to you?
Thank you. And staying on the post-secondary, getting more students involved in taking at least one course that they can get post-secondary credit for. Because students don't have to take any advanced class to graduate, for those kids who are maybe just thinking, it's going to be too hard, or I can't do it, do we have resources in place to support kids who choose to challenge themselves with that kind of class?
I think that's a very layered question, right? So...
Didn't mean it to be.
That's okay. I think all of your questions are layered. The first part of the resource that I would think of is, the kid needs to be able to see themselves as being successful in there, right? So, they have to see others who have taken that class and been successful before they go, oh, man, my friend did it, I can do it, too. They also have to be comfortable in their learning environment, otherwise, they're not going to be willing to take that chance. So, as far as resource, and you've heard this all year long, building that inclusive and welcoming learning environment is something that we're really trying to focus on, so whoever the student is, they feel comfortable taking that leap on whatever that next thing is, not just post-secondary. So, that's the first thing that we have in place. The other thing is just getting our counselors more aware of the options that our students will have, to make sure that our students are entering in the right course at the right point in time in their school year, too. So, as we are learning better or learning more ourselves, I think it would be advantageous for our students who are entering into those different courses.
Director Workman?
So, going back to what you said a, a minute ago about how we set our own standards, I think there can be a danger, if people look at this on-track or not-on-track, to say, well, my goodness, School District X is on-track for every single one of these things, and Rochester is not, so what's wrong with Rochester without these underlying, this underlying information about, well, they only set a half of a percent, you know, increase, and ours was higher. So, I just wanted, I guess, caution against making those, for people to make, not make those kinds of comparisons, because it's really, we're not even talking apples and oranges, we're talking, you know, fruits and veg, nah, chunks of meat versus vegetables.
Director McLaughlin?
Following up on, basically, Dr. Marvin's question, the additional documentation here talks about the post-secondary and career pathway process, and that that's not complete yet. Do you have a timeframe for when that will be complete?
I don't have that in front of me, but I do have all the key initiatives mapped out with all the action steps, and I can get that information to you.
Is it like a six-month or a twelve-month or three?
Well, we're looking at the spring, so somewhere, I would say March, April.
Before next school year, then?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
I'm good, I'll ask him later.
And staying on the post-secondary, I think, as I see the initiatives and, and the numbers, you know, I think we're still seeing the, for our secondary students, the results of not having something like Zello and the post-secondary pathways that we are developing, because I, I think that vision of being that student who takes that post-secondary opportunity in high school starts earlier than high school. And from what I've seen of the Zello platform and the kinds of, you know, curriculum that will go with it, I think we'll start to see the, the benefits of having that conversation earlier, not only for the students, but also for their parents, as they have conversations of the types of courses that they should, should take in high school, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and the registration for our eighth-grade students started this week, so JA got that today. Hula Creek and Lincoln will have the access to that information tomorrow, and then Kellogg the following day. So, the students are already asking questions, like, what is this class? What is that? Why does this class have two? Because there's a prerequisite and things like that, so we're already getting them to think in that mindset. And then, Dr. Marvin earlier talked about how parents are getting more aware of the information, too. So, like I said, as all of us are getting, I would, I would just say, learning more about how the process works, it's only going to benefit the student.
Anything else, board members? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Our next item is a prep for action, the Rethinking Funding Proposal, and this is the next in what will be a series of meetings, where we're going to hear about updates to the balanced budget model. Assistant Pickell?
Thank you. I do want to, I know, a couple of weeks ago, I urged my colleagues to remain seated, because I was long-winded, and I'm going to invite them up, because this is not going to be long-winded, but I would be grateful for the clicker, if you maybe don't throw it, although if I was more confident in my Randy Moss abilities, I would have caught it.
Swimming is your sport, right?
Swimming is my sport, yeah, not football. So, board members, this is an update, I think, a relatively brief one, because we have a very important study session next week, where we'll be digging much more deeply into what we're calling the balanced budget model. Obviously, you know John Carlson, our chief administrative officer, who has overarching responsibility for our operational issues, and of course, Andy Krokstedt, who will ultimately have leadership responsibility for implementing whatever system you approve. I want to make sure you know Denise Moody, as our Director of Innovation, not only is leading the work we do around the, maybe, seven million and counting we've brought in around grants, but also plays a critical role on innovation efforts like this one. And so, that's why this great team is here, and I'm going to turn over any questions that you have tonight to them, and certainly, they'll have a long, a strong role to play with us next week. But in the meantime, this is a progress report on a very moving, a train that is very much in motion. Really importantly, talking with our Chair and Vice Chair on Monday at our Executive Committee meeting, we have revised the schedule for your decision on this process. If you look at the last date there, it has shifted from your December seventeenth meeting to the January seventh meeting. And the logic of that is, it gives us several more weeks to further dig into the data and further incorporate feedback from you, our administrators, and ultimately, from all staff. So, back-mapping from that, you can see tonight, we are sharing with you what we're calling version two of the balanced budget model, which has had some important but relatively limited changes since the version one that I introduced to you last time. We are then in the midst of input sessions with our administrators, both school principals and central office, department leaders and other administrators, called our district-wide leadership group, where we're really digging into specifics of this model. We received extensive written feedback from those leaders that is also very much being analyzed, and that I'll touch on in a moment. We will be presenting a version of the version two that you're going to hear about tonight to our community budget advisory meeting on the ninth of December. Then, we have on the tenth, a very important study session, where we're going to take a look at the questions and the option, the observations that we've received to date, synthesize those and respond to them. We'll also be joined by two experts from our National Technical Assistance Partner, Afton Partners, who have been working with, in particular, Andy and the finance team on the nuts and bolts of this model. Starting on December eleventh, and then that fi, that full week, we'll be working to develop what I think is probably going to be the most significant adapt, adaptation of this model in version three, where we're really going to operationalize that feedback that we've gotten from our administrators, who have the deepest experience with our budgets and from you. And then, we're going to take that version three out and share it with all staff, and we will do that through a video, a written summary, and an online feedback forum that will allow all staff to ask their questions and provide feedback on that model. We will be digging into that, while still giving people a well-deserved holiday break, over that holiday break, and then we will present version four with the, the new year on January second, as we always post materials the week before for board meetings, and then the current plan is to ask you to vote on this model. As you know, even that vote, while a very important milestone, is not the end of the journey, because that then instructs John and the team to build this model into the budget proposal that you would approve in June for the 2025-2026 budget. So, very important, slight extension of our process. The core structure of the model that we talked about at length last time has not changed between version one and version two. There are still four core categories in the proposal, the first three of which are all people and positions and functions that happen at school and program sites. There's a district-required category of our educational program that would be held in common across the system, and a school-managed category that would provide greater flexibility with certain positions and resources, and a centrally managed category, both on the operations side and on the instructional side, that will be centrally managed, because we continue to believe that's both most efficient and effective to do so, and then central office functions that do exist in this building and a handful of other administrative buildings. We know that this chart has gotten a, a good amount of discussion, and it's important to say that the positions and things in, in it are illustrative, not exhaustive. So, one of the things we will share with you at the study session next week is a much more comprehensive listing of which positions and which budgets, such as a supply budget, a technology budget, go in which category. Because we know that when people don't see all of the positions that are in our current budget book, and are not able to track them into this new system, it presents them with less than a full picture of what it would look like. So, we'll be sharing that with you at the study session next week. So, there's three changes, all technical, that the team can talk further with you about in a moment, if you are interested, that have been made between version one and version two. The first is that we dug more deeply into the ratios that would be used to allocate the formulas for middle and high schools in this model in the district-required category. That's that educational program that, in response to Dr. Marvin's question last time, we talked about being held in common across the system. We recognized, as we looked at those ratios, that we were using historic ratios that needed to be really fine-tuned to reflect the contractual agreement we have with Rochester Education Association, that our secondary teachers see up to, but not over than, a hundred and sixty students a day, unless they're on what we call an overload. And so, we've refined that ratio, and that did result in some increased funding for secondary schools compared to version one, and some minor adjustments to element, elementary schools. A second technical change is that we've done a slight decrease in the amount of funding available for that school-managed category, or the flexible category, and you can see, for every hundred and thirty students at the elementary school, they would receive one additional FTE, you know, budgeted out, for every hundred and seventy-one students at middle school, and for every one hundred and eighty-eight students. I want to take this opportunity, because I've obviously had a lot of conversations about this in the last week, to explain in my simplest, and I hope not oversimpl term, how we come up with that flexible category, or the school-managed category. And I'm going to be really oversimplifying, because I think this is a bit hard to understand, but it's fundamental to the model. If you look at all of the expenses that we are accounting for in the other categories, in the district-required, in the centrally administered, and in the central office, and you add them all up, and then you look at the total revenue we have coming into the district, the difference between what is essentially required in the model and the total resources we have, is a pot of money that generates the flexible pot. So, then you have to decide how you're going to distribute that flexible pot, it is done with these ratios. The reason this is important is, this is a system that could adapt and change as the district's financial circumstances adapt and change. So, you would always be covering those, I'm trying not to say the term core, because it sounds like not everything's core, those, let's just say that required positions and expenses, and then that flexible pot adjusts to reflect the total amount of revenue we have coming into the district, while making sure we're covering those required expenses. Let me pause to briefly, am I getting that correct?
You did that.
We did not plan that.
Okay.
Because, we didn't, because I think it's a really important point to say, well, why is there a ratio for that? It's to ensure that those resources, first, were taking care of that required expense, both in buildings and centrally, and then, there's, as you'll see in a moment, there's significant funding in that flexible pot, but it doesn't come at the expense of the required positions and programs. And then, we also made a shift to be consistent with the rest of the theory that learning supports, supports for learning are in that flexible or school-managed pot, and so, elementary school counselors were shifted into that pot. Now, when I highlight that, and as I mentioned, next week, we're going to list all of those positions, that's not to suggest that schools would choose not to continue supporting elementary school counselors, but the recommendation would be to put that into the school-managed resources, whereas middle and high school, because of the indispensable role counselors play in course changes and post-secondary and career preparation, would be in that required component. So, those are the three changes in the first version. Very importantly, this chart, and this is for our elementary schools, shows what percent of their total funding would be in that flexible, school-managed category. So, you can see, it's not the majority, but it's substantive. For Bamber Valley, you see it's twenty-three point one percent, ranging up to thirty-seven point two percent for Gage, I believe, I'm seeing it right. I just started wearing contacts, so I'm not seeing very well these things. You can see for our middle schools, the percentage is there, essentially, about a quarter to thirty-five percent of those resources, and then there you have a chance, oops, to see the, all of our secondary schools. So, a meaningful set of resources, not the majority of the resources. So, the feedback that we've gotten to date, we had some colleagues, both in our, the team that's before us now, and also with some folks in our research organization, synthesized the very, very extensive feedback that we've gotten from administrators to date. And there is an anonymized version of that feedback that is available on our school board website, that board members have been provided with, and as I mentioned, we are in the midst of doing deep dives into the feedback from our administrators through the input sessions that Denise is facilitating. But there's four big themes that are emerging thus far, and the first you can see is that there is generally an optimism about increased flexibility to shape programming to meet unique student needs in each of our schools. There is also, understandably, a very strong desire for greater clarity about how would this work, to really understand not just the substance this work, to really understand not just the substance of the model, but implementation processes timeline, and of course, how is it going to impact the programming we have in our school? There are concerns about, will the new model, if adopted, lead to inequities, especially for specialized or underfunded or lower-funded, is probably a better term than underfunded programs? And then a real question about what might the unintended consequences be of a model, of something this complex? So that is a very broad summary of the feedback that anybody can take a look at and that we are continuing to work with, and that, as I mentioned, we look forward to responding to at the study session next week. So that is a setup. Maybe what I'll do, since the substance of the changes really lie in those points, not necessarily that board members need to probe into those unless you're interested in doing so, but those are the three changes between version two and the version one that you saw a week before. So, Adam.
And I think board members, given that we are going to have an extensive study session at our next meeting, we probably should not expect answers to anything that we might bring up this evening. But if there are questions or considerations that you would like the team to bring to us next week at the study session, this would be a good time to pose that. Unless it's something that you really would like to have answered tonight, because it will help your thinking on asking good questions. Director Marvin.
Thank you. First, a comment, I really appreciate this work, including the sheet about the themes and the issues. I think that's absolutely transparent. I had a community member who was concerned, she said hypothetically, if there were, and this is hypothetical, if there were a building administrator who just was not in tune with the building, things could go really awry. So the question that I don't want to answer tonight is, how is the ultimate oversight going to be done? I mean, when each school submits its proposal for approval, what are going to be the, what's the rubric for approving it and who's doing the oversight? And again, no answer.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight.
Dr. McLaughlin.
I have kind of a higher-level question that maybe I should have answered or asked at an earlier meeting, but I'm hoping that you can answer this. That, I guess I look at it, that in the black and white numbers on slides five and six, it looks like, if someone were just to pop in and look at these numbers, I could see someone without a lot of knowledge being surprised by some of this information? Is it generally based on the number of students at each school, or are there other factors that make that more complex? And I'm kind of curious, both of the, the school-managed flexible funds and the flexible as the percentage of the total, in some ways, in my mind, that flexible, you know, arguably could be, should be the same for each school, rather than different numbers, and kind of explaining why there's a variance in those numbers?
I would indicate that every school is different based on enrollment, first of all, so enrollment is driving a lot of this.
Like the number of students?
Number of students, which enrollment also determines the number of sections, for example, in the elementary schools. So depending on where that enrollment number is, you could be just getting an additional FTE, because you're just surpassing our target, so therefore it looks like you're getting more dollars than a school that has, a similar-sized school that has two or three students under the target, they're not getting that additional FTE, so it looks like they're not getting as much money. However, they're getting the necessary teachers to support the academic needs. That's one reason why you're seeing a variation between the two. It also is going to be related to compensatory funding, because our compensatory dollars are being considered flexible dollars, as are achievement and integration dollars, and title, title funding. And so those dollars make up some of that flexible, and all of those dollars are allocated to the sites, and they're all different. Again, depending on the variables that drive that funding formula, changes between compensatory achievement and integration and by site. So there isn't going to be a complete alignment between even two schools that have identical enrollment numbers, because the population makeup within those particular schools could be different, driving compensatory and achievement integration aid, for example.
Awesome. And I think it really helps, seeing this now in black and white, having that for the public to understand if they're looking at this, those are the factors that are playing into these numbers.
Correct.
Thank you.
Dr. Workman.
I have a question about the changes, the first one for the allocation formulas between for middle and high school students. And once again, if you can't answer this question tonight, that's fine, so I think in the contract, it's 160 students, anything over that is an overload. So, actually, there's several questions. So if it's under 160, does that necessarily mean that that FTE is reduced? And if it's under 160, how many does it need to be under 160 before it's redefined?
So, a little twist on that in the answer, the formula is driven based on how many students are in the building, times the number of periods there are in a day, so how many classes they theoretically could attend, and then divided by 160, which is the number of students a teacher can see, or 1.0 FTE can see in a day. So it was really just truing that up and making sure that there is an opportunity that every student could theoretically see six classes a day or six teachers a day, and every teacher then would be at 160, if everything aligned perfectly in the registrations and filling out of the schedule.
But that wouldn't necessarily be for an individual teacher. I mean, I remember, it's a long time ago now, unfortunately, when I was teaching high school, that the music department had significant numbers, more students than 160, which kind of bought FTEs to be used for the rest of the building because of that.
And I don't know that I would explain it that way, but it would drive, the more students are in there, the higher the FTE is going to go.
And then the second question is, for middle school, is that same 160 applied to teachers who are, who have AB classes that don't meet every day but meet every other day? Would then, would they then have 320 students, or would they have 80 students? Because if they have 320 students, then it's twice as much work in terms of grading, you know, any kind of evaluation of the work that's done in class.
Yeah, we looked at it at 160, and so we didn't factor in an A or a B or a difference with that.
I guess I'm concerned as to how, you know, how that might be dealt with at an individual level.
That's a question we probably need to go back to.
And that's, and once again, I know I'm getting into the management range here, but...
Yeah, there wouldn't be a change from current practice with this model and that issue. If it's a problem, then it's a problem now. But I...
That might be alleviated, by the way, we've corrected the formula in that we've given a slightly more generous staffing at middle school and high school than we were giving this school here. That's correct.
I'm not trying to argue against, I'm not trying to argue against it working positively for that.
What we're basically correcting is that we had an arbitrary number that was set, because it was a ratio that had either been inherited or was working, but we did the math to make sure that it was technically accurate and correct and would fit six classes a day at the high school, 160 students per teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask some questions. I think, building on what Dr. Marvin said, as far as accountability, it would be, I think it would be helpful to see if there are accountability measures planned or in this process for each of the buckets. Like, how are we going to ensure that our district-required and our centrally managed and our central office categories are spent the way that we're intending to spend them? I don't know how you have that worked into any measures, but just something to think about. And also, if, I'm looking at the dollar numbers, if the school gets this flexible fund amount that we see on this list, could the schools conceptually keep their positions exactly the same way that they were in 24-25 budget? And make no changes?
There are likely just a small number of schools, as the model is today, that would be just slightly lower than they are next year than they are this year. But again, some of that is related to maybe an adjustment of title. It also could be an adjustment to their enrollment, so they maybe lost a teacher that, for example, there was a question around Churchill specifically previously, and as I did the research, they are losing, or they appear to have less money next year than they would this year, and that's related to the fact they're losing one FTE. And in a school that size, with that limited number of dollars, because they have only nine teachers, it looks like a greater percentage, but at the end of the day, enrollment is driving that reduction.
And that reduction would probably have happened regardless of this new...
That is correct.
...model that we were adopting, it would have been part of the budget that we saw for the staffing.
That's right. We haven't changed our targets at all. The target numbers are exactly the same as they are this year.
Okay. Because I don't think that, there's very many people right now who could say how much money was currently being spent in the 2024-25 budget on these instructional support and student support categories identified in the model in the current budget versus what would be proposed here. So, I don't know if any of the presentations that we've had have shown like that change, but, and whether that would, I'm not sure that would be helpful, but. And then, if, so listening to the PLC conversation and the statement that the number of kids that need interventions are greater than the resources we have, how would this balanced budget model help address that situation, if at all? And would it be through the flexible funds? Would it be through the centrally managed or the district-required funds? I mean, if that's something that we know is an issue, how would this potentially address that?
It potentially addresses that in a way that somewhat increases the resources available for the development of those interventions over our current state. We currently, for instance, allocate 80% of our compensatory education revenue to sites, this would move it to 100%. We currently concentrate our Title I funds in a subset of mostly elementary schools, and then schools that are over 75% poverty. This would almost double the percentage of schools that receive those dollars. And those dollars are targeted largely toward poverty, which unfortunately correlates with educational need. It does increase some general fund allocations that are flexible, though. And so should a site choose to spend the dollars on, for instance, a reading teacher rather than an instructional coach, they would have that flexibility. Now, that's not to suggest instructional coaches don't help move multi-tiered systems of support, but that is a flexible position, and you could say, we are going to move that into somebody who is directly doing the kind of, for instance, tier-three work that we were just hearing doesn't happen in a classroom or a PLC. So there is that greater flexibility for a site to be doing it. It's really, actually, Chair Nathan, a great example of why this work is happening in year three of our strategic plan rather than year one. As Mona and the team just described, we have a lot of work to do on multi-tiered systems of support, but we are way ahead of where we were. So that if we had tried to have this discussion three years ago, I would worry, people would say, well, you're just going to spend the money on pet priorities. Now, I trust our leaders and our teachers, that they would have been well-thought-out priorities, but it wouldn't have been tied to the understanding we now have of the 25% of kids in some of our secondary schools we're seeing who need intervention in reading. So now, when you have a discussion as a school improvement team, you're certainly, I trust now, looking at that data and thinking about how do we actually organize for improvement at the site? So that's the, I think, hoped-for strategy. But a lot of it, of course, doesn't come from how the money flows, it comes from how you use the money. And so I think this further enables the journey that we're already on in that area.
And we probably couldn't have made, the building leaders probably could not have made these decisions about how to use the school-managed funds in accordance with whatever accountability measures we develop, if they hadn't gone through this process of learning the data, knowing the data, knowing how to identify the students and what interventions they need and the resources we have now.
Yes, and then it's another reason why we have had such a large percentage of our leaders go through the Minnesota Principals Academy and other research-based approaches to leadership, in that when you want to put somewhat more authority at the site level, you want to make sure that there's good collaborative, transparent decision-making. It's also why there will be a formal role for school improvement teams that are multi-perspective in setting the strategies for improvement. This will not just be, as I said before, the principal as enlightened dictator and making all these unilateral decisions, but it is belief in our building leaders with structured school improvement processes.
Dr. Workman.
Will there be latitude to create new positions within a school that don't exist? I'll give you an example. Back in the middle 1970s, that's a couple of weeks ago, looking at the Lincoln model from that time, the staff had a lot of discretion and flexibility in terms of how they were going to use the staffing that they had. So they decided that they would increase their class sizes by maybe two or three students, so that they would have the funding then to buy what they called, at that time, a thematic coordinator, which was able to do a whole lot of other kinds of things for students that they normally wouldn't have been to do. So, first question, would new positions be able to be created that are, well, I guess we have the zebra fish now, which has gone to some other elementary schools, but were certainly a result of that Lincoln model, would they have the latitude to create those new positions? And then the other question on that would be, how would those, might those positions be evaluated? You know, how much flexibility within their flexible funding could they have for something like that?
Because there is not, in this model, or even with the passage of the referendum, a large amount of new money coming into Rochester Public Schools, the creation of any new position largely involves the elimination of an existing position, or the reallocation of those dollars from something like a supply or technology budget. And so the answer is potentially yes, but it's not an explosion in our aggregate staffing numbers. I think this board had made a fundamental decision in 20, the fall of 2021, when you recognized that staffing grew faster in this district than it should have by multiples. We must not return to that. We can't pay our employees and give them the benefits they deserve if we spend all our money on number of staff. We must hold the line on the growth of staff in this district. And so it's going to be a hard sell to get increased positions past my desk, but the reallocation of positions to meet student needs is absolutely something that is happening and can happen. Now, of course, if enrollment goes up, that's a different story. When we're talking about increased enrollment, we need more people to serve those kids. We're basically flat right now, and so that's why this is more about using our existing resources in creative ways and effective ways, rather than an aggregate increase in positions.
I think, one of the things that I noticed in the survey responses that you shared with the board was this sort of, still this idea that, oh, the referendum passed, now we can do all these new things. And I think that's, you know, I appreciate the fact that you keep hammering home that idea, but I think that people are so excited about this new flexibility, it's like, well, I can do this and this and this and this and all this other stuff, and my class sizes can be, you know, students with 15, kind of thing, and that's going to be, maybe, you're going to have fun bringing that in. I think you've already done an Admiral...
Well, hasn't been fun, but, yeah, right.
Dr. Cook.
So I had a couple things I wanted to raise. One is, and Dr. Bacall, I know that this has been on your radar for a while, but the need for our district to ensure ongoing, continuous curriculum review and adoption, and the, and a appropriate supply budget for that, and, you know, the resources in terms of people that need to be able to do that without one-time COVID funding and so forth. So it's not immediately obvious that that's reflected here, but it's probably in the central office category. But making that clear, I think, would be helpful. And then... And then the other thing, returning to the referendum, I, I would, I would appreciate some information about where the priorities enunciated in the referendum and that our community affirmatively expressed their interest in maintaining where those ignite student learning priorities are reflected in these different columns. And in particular, I'd, I'd want to make sure that we give some careful thought to any of those areas being in the site managed, flexible, you know, discretionary category. Because to the extent that some of the resources that are needed to, you know, like, like school counselors, which is one of the things that was talked about in the context of the referendum, but not, certainly not the only one, reading specialists and so forth, to the extent that schools are choosing other forms of supports for their students instead of those things, I, I just think that, that, that may be perfectly valid and sensible in the context of that, of that site's school improvement plan. But I think we need to be really thoughtful about making sure that we're holding true to the, the promise that, that, you know, the referendum result reflected. And then the last thing is, on the accountability measures or effectiveness measures, which is really what this board has instructed the administration to make sure that, that this balanced budget model, brilliant name, by the way, so hard to vote against, a balanced budget model.
That never occurred to me.
But the effect, you know, the, the board wanted this, this funding design or funding model to be one that is effective. And I think the way that I understood that was something that is tied to using resources in a way that drives positive student outcomes. And so the, the skip mechanism that you had alluded to as being sort of the primary motivator of how resources are allocated within the site discretionary model makes a lot of sense to me. I think that that works, but maybe that's an area that could be fleshed out just a little bit more to understand, you know, the, the basis that sites would have for allocating the resources in a way that, you know, supported a theory of action along those skip improvement goals. And then the reporting mechanisms are kind of built into that so that there'd be opportunities to adjust as needed. But anyway, that's just some of my reflections, and I'm excited about this. I think, I think there's a lot of opportunity here, so.
If I can just brief, there's, thank you, Director Cook. There's a ton that we look forward to responding to next week. I do want to say, we have been very attentive to the referendum commitments in there, and you're absolutely right, we should make that explicit. And so we will do that because I agree with you, we have to make sure that the community knows that we're executing on those 100%.
Director, or Director McLaughlin?
I just wanted to reflect on the fact that the last slide here, looking at the overarching themes, it didn't seem to jump out at me when I first looked at this, is one of the things that I took away from reading the detailed feedback is how this model will help administrators allocate resources based on what they see at the low, their, their school level of how each school isn't the same. It's, they're not cookie cutters of each other, that there's specific needs of certain schools, that it seems like that's part of the underlying goal of, of adopting and looking at this model. And I think it's somewhat captured in the optimize, optimism about flexibility and the local needs. But I'm thinking the word local is not the word that I would put there. It's school-based or community-based. The, the more specific feedback was talking about the community needs of each individual school. And I don't think that local captures that. I'm thinking local like, local is a different, I mean, can you have all different kinds of definitions? But I think that that's what's really exciting about this model. And I think that, I look at it sort of as the administrators through that Principals Academy doing some deeper learning about their school communities and that this is designed to meet the needs that I expect that they're identifying in their individual buildings. So I'm excited about it as well.
Director Workman.
So I think we may have a future school board member in the making who concluded, it was near the end of the, the survey, who said, "It will be helpful to establish the mindset that RPS students are all of our students, not just one particular building." And so we, as a board, we have a 30,000-foot view of seeing all of it or overseeing all of it. And I think that was really an astute observation on, from a person who is maybe primarily concerned with their building, their staff, their program to really get it. So I, I'd really kind of like to see if we can, you know, magnify that message.
And I think my last question has to do with the fallout for the staffing after the selections are made. And let's say a school identifies a position they don't currently have filled, or they don't maybe currently use in their school, and they want it filled. How, you know, what's the draft process look like? Like where, what is the pool of people that we have to fill that? And then consequently, if a school does decide they had, there's a position they had before and their student needs don't reflect that, where does that person who was previously at one school made available to other schools who might be looking for that position?
Well, that's where I think we go back, and I wouldn't say the old way, but our, our established procedures for following the contracts that are before us and making sure we completely honor those and the timelines for posting and transferring and making available staff who may have been displaced at one building, the first opportunity to be selected in another building.
So our current process is structured to handle whatever that shift might be after the decisions are made?
That's right.
It is, though I think that, you know, working collaboratively, especially with our unions, there are some improvements we can make. I would love to speed up our transfer process for the folks who want to do that. But that's not a change in the fundamental process. It's just, it's actually making it more efficient and effective. One of the things that Afton Partners, our technical assistance provider, who you'll meet a couple representatives of next week, saw as a real strength of our system is how we work that process now. And so the productive rigidity of that process is something we don't want to sacrifice. Like, it's very rules-based, it's very clear to implement once the dominoes start in motion. We are going to have to start it chronologically earlier, which we are doing now. I mean, you know, I'm told, four years ago, sometimes schools used to do their school improvement plan in October. Now, that is long gone. And we, last year, moved the staffing process up about a week, like, or so. We're, we're going to continue to need to move the school improvement process earlier so the needs assessment is happening and things. So there's definitely going to be a, I think the concern people have about the quality of implementation here is a well-taken one. Like, we're going to have a lot of moving pieces here to get right, to make this work, because it's going to have to start much earlier than it has. So we have time to run that process, given the greater flexibility sites will have. Because in the end, of course, we both must and want to acknowledge everybody's right to tenure and, and, you know, transfer rights.
Board members, anything else?
I'll wait till next, I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait for the study session.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Our next item is 9.1, an action item, the 2025-26 Course Registration Guide. I'll read the resolution, ask for motion and second, and if received, we will have discussion. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved the 2025-26 Course Registration Guide for grades nine through 12.
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Director Cook.
I just wanted to share that I, I had the opportunity to review this course registration guide with, with some students in high school. And it was incredibly exciting to just see the, the eyes light up at the, the offerings available and science especially, but really across the board. So there's some really fantastic classes that are available here. I'm glad that we're able to offer them.
Anybody else? All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution has been approved. Item 10, other business. The board questions and responses are available in the agenda that were submitted for the meeting. Our updated ABCD is available in this agenda item. Are there any items board members would like to raise for consideration for a future meeting agenda? Don't get excited, but the ABCD 2025 is coming your way for this study session next, next week. I shouldn't be that excited about it. Upcoming board meeting dates...
Yes, you can. It's okay. We understand. Kind of done.
Upcoming board meeting dates, December 10th at 5:30 is the study session. December 17th, please note the change in time begins at 6 o'clock PM with our special session on truth and taxation. Immediately following will be our regular meeting. And then our first meeting of 2025 will be on January 7th at 5:30. And then on January 14th at 5:30, we have a study session. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:50 PM.